To order. Okay, I'm calling this meeting to order. It is two oh three. We have a quorum. All committee members are present. I do not have a chairman's report today. Agenda item D is ad hoc subcommittee reports. Does the subcommittee on Brian Way's disposal have anything to report?
Um, I do. If I could go ahead, we met with utilities manager, D'Enzo, Michael Thomas, myself, Dave Pearson, and we talked about reducing the amount of water needed to discharge from an armor process, looking at different technologies that that would accomplish that and you know, had a fairly in-depth meeting talking about the infrastructure that exists currently and about ideas in the future about what could be done to dispose of waste other than an outfall in the ocean or other than trucks running every so many hours trying to dispose of it. And Ray followed up on that meeting with a RFP to a consultancy that provides this kind of information and I don't know, we'll have to ask Ray what where we are on that. The request for proposal showed that that the concept paper should have been due on June 29th and encourage or discourage decision notification the week of August 8th. So this this was something we haven't talked about and probably could either talk about it at this meeting or some other one, but that was basically all that came out of that meeting is a discussion of what current infrastructure there is. The possibility of doing a brain, you know, a brain discharge that has no liquid in it. And Ray told us that that sort of system which reduces the brine into a like a crunchy mush of rock salt would only have to haul out a truckload of material maybe once a month instead of once a day or multiple times a day. So that was encouraging, but as far as other details, I don't know what they are, but perhaps Ray could bring us up to date.
Do any of the other of your ad hoc same ad hoc committee have any comments, Michael?
Um, nothing, nothing of substance.
Okay, Ray, do you want to give us an update on where we are on this zero liquid discharge that your ad hoc committee met about?
So yeah, let me make the opportunity to clarify a little bit. So the 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 concept paper that that a committee member Webb is talking about is the it's a concept paper that the global water innovations was going to submit on the district's behalf to the 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 national alliance of water innovations, which is which is going to give us the grant for the pilot study for the zero liquid sister that for the zero liquid discharge. So as far as that's concerned, there there was no RFP for for different consultants. It was the consultant. The the RFP terminology was was for for the for the National Association, the National Alliance of Water Innovation, the grant, the grant T was was soliciting projects to to give grants for for this particular project of zero liquid discharge. And so that was the the clarification there. It was it wasn't us getting RFPs for different consultants. It was that grant that that grant organization getting solicitations for for projects that they wanted to fund. In this case, it was for the the Brian Way's disposal, which which is promising to be a zero liquid discharge. And as far as updates for that, we we were able to provide a Brian sample to the global water innovation, just to get some preliminary bench testing on the on the technology and and it looks very promising. So we're hoping that the the full pilot project will will be awarded sometime later this year and the actual project will get started early next year. So yeah, that's that's the full update on that.
Okay.
But there there will be that, you know, there will be some board action before we actually move forward because like once the once the the grant gets officially awarded, you know, we would still need board action to, you know, participate because we 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 need to know the conditions of the grant and 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 all of that. So.
Okay. David, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify that under this grant, the cost to the district will be very minimal. It will consist only of our people try, you know, helping out with certain aspects of the installation and and monitoring, but a very, very minor amount of a cost to the district. I don't want people to get excited about.
Okay, um, are there any studies that have to be done before we can embark on the on the pilot project?
No.
Okay. Okay. Okay, are there any other ad hoc committee reports? Okay, committee committee member communications. Did any committee member want to make an announcement, report briefly on his or her activities or ask a question for clarification? Seeing one.
Is this is this a time we could ask? The question on the sewer for the Dow property north of town?
Um, not on the agenda, but I was going to bring that up because I was going to read a public comment from a member of the public later on as we move forward in the meeting and that issue is brought up in that public comment. So I'll have him address that then if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, so public comment on items not on the agenda. Do any of the attendees have any public comment on items not on the agenda? I don't see any hands raised. Okay. So agenda item two A is consideration to approve the May ninth resources and infrastructure regular meeting minutes and the July 11th resources and infrastructure finance committee joint special meeting minutes. Let's take the May ninth meetings, meeting minutes first. Does anybody have any corrections or anything regarding the main nights RNA meeting minutes? Any comments, any errors you see? No? Okay, so I would like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes for the Monday, May ninth RNA meeting. Anybody want to make a motion? Okay, we'll have David is making the motion and Jim is seconding if that is okay. Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote because when people watch this recording later, they can't see your hands. So David?
Yeah, I.
Jim?
Hi.
Okay, Stephen? You're muted. Okay, Brad?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Okay, we have five eyes. It's unanimous. Okay, the July 11th resources and infrastructure and finance committee special meeting minutes. Does anybody have any questions or comments on those minutes? No? Okay, may I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second him.
Okay, moved by David Pearson, seconded by Jim Webb. Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. David?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Stephen? Brad?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Okay, the vote is unanimous. The minutes are accepted. Okay, regular business item three A is an update on the San Simeon Water Main permanent replacement. This would be yours, Ray.
All right. Thank you, Director Dean. So the we had a meeting with with one of the consultants that that did with MKN, to be specific, we met on field, I mean onsite and to go over just some of the requirements that we'll need and some possible alternatives. The conclusion of the meeting is that we would need to put out an RFP for both the design and the permitting portion of it because they all they're kind of tied closely together because the actual alternative will define the the level of permitting that would need that we would need. So we will be preparing, staff will be preparing an RFP for that that item. And we anticipate sometime in the next month or so, we will have that and we will need to present that to the board.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ray on this?
What is the proposal they're looking at? I mean, I don't, what is the alignment of the pipe gonna be that they're going to propose?
Mr. D'Enzo?
Oh, um, that that's the whole reason why we we will need to do design alternatives because there's 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 essentially three conceivable projects follow the same alignment, but with a different kind of a pipe. But that would still mean we would need to go through that marsh and and still go through state property, which I know that my the predecessor before me was opposed to that project and I have the same opinion. And also another another alternative would be to follow the highway one alignment and then cross the bridge there for that that main highway one bridge that crosses San Simeon Creek and then turn right on San Simeon Creek Road. That's another option. And then another alternative would be to also go down highway one, but actually turn right on Washburn and connect to the the existing facility there at the pedestrian bridge within the San Simeon State Park, that that campground, I should say. The the disadvantage there is it still would go through state parks property and it would still go through some also environmentally sensitive habitat within state park property. And and the reason why that's kind of a complication is because since it is on state park property, the the ownership of the environmental document is going to be sticky. It would be best if the district was the one that created environmental document, but it would mean that it would not be in any property other than the district. And then, you know, we can probably get an easement through through Caltrans. We can get an easement through through state parks, but the fact that it's it's going through their property, their their private property, it's going to complicate it regarding the environmental document. So all of that needs to be vetted into designing and permitting process and it's a little bit more complicated than just a simple design project, which would have been easier, but it's not that easy. So hence we would need to go with an RFP for this.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes.
Michael?
So just so I'm hearing clearly, you've summarized the selection of the alternative will be part of what the what is in in the RFP. It'll be it'll be route selection, design and construction.
Yes, because well, it to be more clearly, it would it would also define the the scope and complexity of the environmental document.
Yeah.
RFP is just for the alternatives analysis.
Yes, yes. But yeah, it's not it's not going to be full design yet, but yeah, but it will it will include, but part of it is going to include like the environmental aspects of it.
Okay, so if you were to go across, follow highway one and cross the bridge, could you actually suspend the pipe to that bridge or would you have to do something similar to what they're doing over Toro Creek?
I I would prefer that we just let the designers, you know, go.
And and we're only looking at the water line, right? Not not the wastewater affluent line?
Well, I'm I'm proposing that we also include affluent line in this in this design since you know, since we we would already go through the design alternative and and if the issue would be just to put another pipe in a trench, that would make it a lot more simply simpler. So.
Okay, and just for clarification, because I don't think everybody understands what that wastewater line is. That's not a sewer line per se. It's taking the wastewater treated affluent over to the percolation ponds, isn't it? Is that is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And and it's also made of this very similar materials as the water line was. So I I do have a concern that that pipe will 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 be damaged very similarly like the water line did. So.
Okay. Okay, does anyone else have any questions for clarification on this? Okay, if there are any public comments on this particular item? I don't see any hands raised. Okay, so item three B is an update on the section seven S ESA and the task one in stream flow study. So I think it's back on you, Mr. D'Enzo or Melissa.
So as far as so they're actually two two different things. So the the section seven ESA, which is the section seven environmental endangered endangered species act, I should say, is the the next step of the permitting process for the for the WRF. Since we, if you remember, we all we updated the AMP and we did some some modeling relating to to the specific area of the AMP of of the of the WRF, you know, the app means adaptive management plan. So now the 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 concept is because we in our application to the the county and essentially coastal commission, we the 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 permanent project will require an extension of the lagoon discharge line to the confluence of San Simeon Creek and and Van Gordon Creek. So where it where it is now in the process is that we we did get the topographical survey done because we will need to do a we will need to also include a design of that that extension. So that that project is is in progress in this in this last week, we, you know, we we did have a topographical survey done. The surveyor was out there. Our environment, our environment environmental biologists were out there to do some surveys and this determines some some good alternatives for the extension of that lagoon discharge because currently we're where the lagoon discharge is right now. It works for just the emergency portion of the project, but if we were to get a permanent project, we do need to have that line extended to the confluence of San Simeon and and Van Gordon Creek. So that's where it is right now with that. And then, you know, and part of the part of the effort also is, you know, the delineation, updating the delineation of the wetland, which which is also in progress. And then once all of that is, once once the design concept is is complete with the the lagoon discharge extension, then we will submit that as a package along with all of the studies that we've done up to this up to this point to the Army Corps of Engineers and then they will do a determination. And and hopefully they'll give us a good biological opinion for for the project. And as far as task one of the in-stream flow study, the field work is complete. The Stillwater Sciences, who is our consultant, is now working is working on the analysis. And we should have a draft of the plan completed by next month. So that is still moving forward in making good progress. So we will have a staff review draft by next month. So that's where we're at on those two projects.
Okay, and the timeline for the endangered species act, section seven study, what is the timeline on that?
We're still hoping that we can get some submitted to that September, October. So.
Okay, so they should both be done close to the same time?
Yes.
Okay, and once those two things are done and they're submitted, what are we looking at as far as being able to get the county to start looking at our permit?
Well, I will hopefully, well, in in the intermediary, we're hoping that the you know, the Army Corps and US Fish and Wildlife will get the review back to us, you know, within a sixty day timeframe. And so you know, and this is still anticipating by the end of the year, we'll have that, we'll have that done, you know, assuming everything aligns perfectly with that with, you know, what what I can't control, what we can't control is the 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 review time of 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 Army Corps and US Fish and Wildlife. So but I anticipate if we typically sixty days is the timeline that they give themselves. So if we submit it by October, you know, we should have it by December, January.
And these are the last two tasks that we needed to get done for this permit process?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment on this update, either of these updates? Don't see any. Okay, Publix being very quiet today. Okay, agenda item three C is to provide feedback to the staff regarding the 2022 annual water shortage assessment and discuss the planned updates to the water shortage contingency plan. Did you want to introduce this, Ray, or would you like Melissa to introduce it? You're muted.
You think that it wouldn't that wouldn't happen anymore? So yeah, the I'm going to go ahead and introduce the 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 project or the item. So the 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 reason for this item is that we would like the RNA to provide feedback for us for our water shortage, our our annual water shortage assessment and and also discuss the planned updates for the water shortage contingency plan because as we've gone through this process, we've now had one year to to essentially digest and work through the different data that that we've been using to make recommendations to the board really regarding our water shortage stages. And as you know, like like with anything else, we've we've noticed like different issues that have come up and ways that we can make things more clear. We also understood, and I think the the committee here would would agree that there was a lot of confusion relating to the old ways of how we used to report our our conditions, our stage conditions monthly, but in in my staff, in my utility reports, monthly utility reports. So we introduced on on June 9th, staff submitted, which was required by the state are the annual water shortage assessment. And we went prior to us submitting that we went through an annual water supply and demand assessment, which is the analysis that's required to submit that plan. At least and we presented the the findings of that to to the board on June 9th. And as a result of that meeting, the the board found it, you know, recommended that that we we bring some of these items to the RNA committee. And mainly, we the 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 main thing that came out of that that June night discussion is the the new way in which we're going to report and and recommend water shortage conditions. So I'm going ahead, I'm going to go ahead and share that, share my screen for a second because I have a little presentation here that I want to share.
While you're bringing that up, I just want to let the public know that I'm going to take public comment after the presentation is done. I see hands up.
So now go ahead. So okay. So this right here is the of this this, do people see just the the presentation or do you see part of the the panel, the the speaker panel?
I see the presentation and then I on the right hand side of my screen, I see five squares of.
Okay, okay.
It's the way it normally is.
Okay. I'm really didn't hide that. Okay, so so the purpose of this is to receive comments on on this table that I'm about to share with you because the this, I believe, and and I is is a good way that that we've discovered that is how we should present our water shortage condition because the way it used to be done was we we used to prevent of present metrics, you know, based on water levels, you know, from from San Simeon water level from from Santa Rosa and water level from Windsor Bridge East, Windsor Bridge West, which is tied to the Santa Rosa. And also, we 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 shared with you the 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 gradient between nine nine P two and 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 our our wellfields, I'm just drawing a blank, sorry. So, um, I hit my head earlier this morning. So anyway, I'll just use as an excuse. So anyway, we and the 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 thing about it is we will still be using those criteria and and the other thing that I forgot to to mention is we will also talk about the the water levels, I mean, the the rainfall levels for the year. So all of that, our criteria that we will still use when we when we do our analysis and when we do our recommendations. The the difference here, which I think makes it more holistic and dynamic is that it really is tied to the actual water supply that we get that year or in in this case, for the particular month and also the actual demand that's actually used based on the 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 water shortage condition and also based on the the actions of water conservation that we're asking the the community to do. And on a month to month basis, we will track to see how the actual savings are, you know, we 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 intend to report the actual savings of how the community responded to the water shortage issues of conditions. So a couple of things that, you know, so this this particular table is attachment. It's it's on page twenty seven of your packet and so you had that, you you have it in front of you. The four things though that I want to highlight from that table, you you're certainly able to ask me, you know, whatever questions that you want to ask relating to that relating to this table. But I want to show the the, you know, highlight here. Number one is actual demand. So this this is actual data now that that we got from the month of July. So the demand was actually fifty point four, fifty point six four acre feet was was what was actually used. So that's the number one. And then the actual, you know, based on what we asked for the the community to conserve, we asked them to 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 conserve ten point four acre feet. But the actual number that we got just based on the what what we got from the community was only a reduction of one point four acre feet. what we got from the community was only a reduction of one point four acre feet. So that results, you know, this number three, that, you know, we, even though we used a little bit less, um, supply, uh, the, we actually got, um, also, uh, a shortage of, you know, we, we fell short of our, our, um, our target, uh, water shortage action, so the, the conservation action, so hence, that results, um, in, in, for the month of August, you know, this is number four, uh, bullet point here, is that the community, um, we, we now need to ask the community to reduce by twenty-four percent, which would put us into the stage three level. Because what, um, in, in, for the month of July, we had anticipated that, you know, we would only need to save fourteen percent, which, which is still in the stage two range. But now, um, since we fell short of that particular target, we will now need to uh, reduce by twenty-four percent, uh, starting in August. So that now is where we're at, um, and that's why, uh, that's why this month, um, hopefully, uh, we will still, uh, you know, we will be recommending a stage three condition. And before I, I move forward with, with anything else, Melissa, do you have anything to add to this?
Oh, do I have to unmute her?
I think I'm in as a, as an attendee and not a panelist.
Okay.
Okay, I unmuted you, um, I'm not quite sure how to move you, hang on a second. Okay, okay, thank you. I think you had to accept being a panelist.
Okay, I think I'm here. Sorry, I'm having extreme technical difficulties today. I unfortunately missed most of Ray's presentation, so I will chime in if there are comments or questions.
Okay, um, you are taking in consideration when you're looking at the actual desant, demand, both of our wellfields, correct?
Yes.
Okay, does anyone on the committee have any questions for clarification on this?
Just to clarify, I have a one question.
Okay.
I, I assume then the next step will be to present this to the board with the recommendation that we move to stage three, is that? Is, is that the implications, Ray, or Melissa?
Yes, that would be, that, that is the, the implication, and, uh, and also, by the way, uh, we will be showing this table, um, every month, you know, it's, you know, regardless of whether we move up or down a stage, I, I will be presenting this table, uh, every month at the utilities report.
Okay, anybody else, um, Mr. Weichold?
Yeah, for Ray, could, could you explain the process and the thinking behind when we're not meeting goals, what the options are, because it's not necessarily always a, um, a shift to the next stage, correct?
Yes, yeah, thanks for, for asking that question, so, so, um, as long as the, the shortage supply, you know, like this, this particular line here that shows number four, if, if say we, if say we needed, instead of twenty-four percent, if they say we needed eighteen percent or something like that, then we wouldn't recommend the stage three situation there, what we, what we could recommend are more water conservation measures to be, um, to be enacted. And the board has authority to do that, to do those kinds of, um, of actions. Because I, you know, if, if we are falling short, but not falling short to the extent that it moves us into another percentage category, like in this case, uh, it moves us past twenty percent, which is clearly a stage three. Uh, so until we get to that point, uh, we would, we would only recommend water shortage or what, water conservation measures, but not necessarily introduce, uh, going up in stage.
Okay, uh, Jim, you have a question?
Yes, um, I wanted to ask Ray about something I read regarding the gradient and a discussion that showed when the gradient, uh, turns negative, I guess, to the field or, I'm not sure if I've got which one I've got right. It said, it said in your comments that, uh, the district would not deliver wastewater to the percolation pond because they thought that would, uh, make the situation worse. And I was wondering if, if you could explain to me, uh, what is done with the wastewater if it's not, uh, put in the percolation pond?
We need to put wastewater in the percolation pond, that's why it's, uh, if, if we were, uh, if we were ever to reach that point where it's a negative point nine feet for, um, for three months, you know, that, that's how we, you know, the regional board gives us an opportunity to make a correction. So we're getting close to that, um, then, yeah, absolutely, we would need to, to do some drastic things in order to, to, to continue to, uh, percolate, you know, to send our disposal to the percolation pond. And, and a good way to do that would be to, to run the, the WRF, but, you know, in, in, in a situation like that, that would, that would require a stage five situation, but, um, but I said in, you know, fortunately, since, since we've been keeping track of that metric, we, you know, we would get, we would get close to level, but I've never seen it go negative yet, so, um, and it, like I said, even if it were to go negative, we still have three months to be, to make corrections to that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Uh, David?
So review for me, um, how we get the numbers on the anticipated total water supply line? And I realize we do that in April, April first, but how do we calculate that number?
Okay, Melissa, can you answer this question? You have a good answer for this.
Yes, um, so the anticipated total water supply came from, um, looking at the actual, um, pumping volumes, um, from the twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen period. So we're using, um, historical pumping rates that came from years similar to the year that we're experiencing now. So we looked at the years that led up to the twenty fifteen, sixteen period, um, that year in and of itself and found, um, conditions that were comparable to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one period, which is the period that has led up to our current water year. So remember, this assessment is looking at July first of this year through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. So we are basing those projections off of, um, you know, historical norms and trends, um, and then taking into account things like, um, basin protocol, um, or basin management protocols and sort of tempering, um, what we know has happened in the past with what we think is going to be happening in the future. So those are actual pumping volumes from, you know, July twenty fifteen through June twenty sixteen.
So, that, that year was picked because it had similar rainfall and.
Dry season, um, the water shortage indicators, like the, the water shortage evaluation criteria were similar. And that's the, the meat of the annual water supply and demand assessment. Did the data comparison where you looked at those different metrics and how they compared to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one year? So our, our supply may be slightly, you know, these are conservative estimates because the state has, you know, the state essentially is forcing us to plan for our most extreme dry year on record. And then if you deviate from that, which our current urban water management plan would put that as the twenty fourteen calendar year. But if you deviate away from that, you have to explain why and what you've done. So the, the reason you'll see so many twenty-three or twenty thirteen, fourteen metrics in that assessment is because I was trying to highlight the difference in the severity of, you know, thirteen, fourteen versus fourteen, fifteen, which resembled more of what we've been experiencing in the past few years. So planning for a year like twenty fourteen would have put our supply estimates even lower, and we thought that would be calling for more of a reduction than was necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, when you say that, um, the percentages for, um, like you're showing in line four, if they weren't to the point to determine that we needed to move to the next stage, but we still needed to reduce the amount of water through conservation, when you're saying we can enact other water shortage, um, plan actions, are we talking about, for example, if we were in stage two and we weren't at a point where we needed to be a stage three based on that, um, shortage percentage, we would just enact more of the restrictions from stage three rather than?
Or, or brand-new restrictions, the board has the authority to, um, authorize any conservation measures that it sees fit. Um, those can be from other stages, or those can be brand-new measures. So we have been researching alternatives and kind of benchmarking, um, some other conservation measures that similar districts, um, have implemented to see if we could consider implementing those in Cambria. So we do have some additional restrictions, and that's most likely gonna come, and I'm, I'm hoping that August doesn't, you know, we're, we're gonna be bringing the stage three to the board late in the month, and that's gonna set us back a little bit in terms of trying to get that reduction that we need in August. But we're going to be operating as if we're already in a stage three, so staff will be pushing out some additional messaging and trying to keep us, um, kind of keep our heads above water. Because if we don't see the reduction that we need in August, it's gonna compound again, and we could see, you know, a stage four declaration in September. And it'll keep moving forward like that, so we are gonna be, um, asking the board to consider some additional restrictions beyond the stage three when we bring that, um, to the board and later this month.
Okay, and that'll be on the August eighteenth meeting, I believe. Okay, we have, uh, one attendee who has their hand up. Oh, um, let me go ahead, um, Michael, did you just have a question for clarification? Or do, I mean, do you wanna wait until after the?
That's fine, oh, I, I can wait, yeah.
Okay, um, John?
I just wanted to ask Ray to talk a little bit about the, um, the water data that he normally shares. Because this new format essentially, um, takes the place of looking at those water charts, those well-level charts. Ray, are those even worth posting anymore on the, uh, weekly, your weekly or your monthly meetings? Uh, for purposes, because I think at this point, it's a little confusing. Everybody's used to looking at the well levels and, and you're not as much anymore, you're looking at them, but not making decisions based on those.
Uh, yeah, well, I, I, I think just, I, I think like what we've been posting in the past, I think it's appropriate to keep those on there. Where, where it does, where, where it does come into play a little bit is, you know, it, it's a combination of the metrics, which, uh, you know, that's the danger of, of, uh, the freedom of information, you know, there's, you know, we have all this information, but, uh, but, uh, we, we do go through a process on, on how we, how some metrics are weighted more than others, you know, depending on the time of the year it is. Like, for example, now, like, uh, believe it or not, like, earlier in the year when there's a lot of rain, you know, if, whenever that used to happen, uh, I, like, the, the, the gradient was important to me. Uh, because like when, 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 when the water levels are high, the gradients could start equalizing a little bit more. In the situation now, um, like well levels, when, when it starts getting close to, to, you know, to, to, you know, for example, in, in Santa Rosa, when, when the, well, when Windsor Bridge West, Windsor Bridge East, when those start getting close to three feet, uh, those are the metrics that I look at, that, um, that are getting kind of important. So, so I guess what, what I'm saying is, is like, you know, someone sees like the, the data, like, like, for example, that chart, the Sansimian chart, they follow that graph, and yes, it, it looks like we're starting to follow twenty twenty-one, and they say, well, twenty twenty-one was a dry year, well, it was a dry year. Uh, and, and it looks like we're following, we're, we're, we're tracking very similarly to twenty twenty-one, so, um, but, but to answer the question, I think, I think it's okay to keep it, to keep it there. The difference is, is that we're not, we're not, like, impo, you know, we're, we're, we're not like, uh, saying that this level means this stage, this gradient means this stage, um, because that, that was never the intent of, of that, of that data. It was, it was only, it was always the intent of comparing that as a percentage of April, when, when all the water levels were high. Um, so it morphed into something that it shouldn't have happened, and it ended up causing confusion. But, but still maintaining the, the water data is just in its raw form and presenting it the way we've been presenting it, I think it's fine.
Okay, we have two members of the public that are waiting to speak, and then I'll bring it back, so David and Michael can chime in. Uh, Crosby and Laura, let me unmute you. Okay.
Good afternoon, Vice President Dean, members of the committee and staff president. I have a couple of comments on the draft appendix four point one two A, which is on page twenty-five of the packet. First paragraph spells out dry season's start date and length as elements of the annual water supply and demand assessment. However, there is no discussion about the dry season length, although dry season start date is defined in the following paragraph. Projecting a dry season length which includes historical late agroforecharge dates is critical to assessing water availability throughout an extended dry season. The second comment, paragraph eight point four A states, operation of the percolation ponds for wastewater disposal must cease. The other option specified in the operating order for the percolation ponds is to lower the water level in the ponds by turning on the nine P seven gradient control well. And my third comment is, in section C dot four, states, the updates will include actual supply and demand figures. In fact, there is no actual supply information in the supply and demand assessment. The anticipated total water supply values listed in the potable water shortage assessment table are not based on actual current supplies, but on customer demand numbers from two thousand fifteen. Actual current stored water supplies in the act first can be determined by well-level readings and agroforecapacity tabulations. It is necessary to have accurate supply information available to make good decisions about conservation measures and WRF operations. That's the, concludes my comments, I did submit a written comment that I'd like to have included in the record, and, uh, Laura also has a comment if you allow that.
Okay, go ahead, Laura.
Thank you, hello, everybody, my, mine is a simple one, okay, apparently, the town did not comply with the water conservation as was requested. And my question is, hope our connection doesn't blow up here. Thing is, what I would like to know, who did not comply, you know, which accounts use what, was it commercial? Was it residences? Who, who are the people that are not complying, maybe let us know that and ask them to improve it, we wouldn't have to go to a brief. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Ray, do you wanna respond to any of those, um, questions?
So, let, let me, um, so in, in, I'm, I'm not really sure what the question is for the, the dry season length, uh, except that, uh, so Santa Rosa, it's by May first, uh, to, to October thirtieth. But Sansimian, it's, it's really defined. But San Simeon, it's, it's really defined by the, the flow of, you know, the flow of Palmer, of Palmer Flats. Uh, in which case, um, you know, if it, you know, if, if it ceases in May, that's when the dry season starts. If it ceases in June, that's when the dry season starts. It's raining in October, that's when the dry season is over, is over. So I'm not sure what the question is with, with that, but, and as far as the question or the comment about 9P7, using 9P7 as a, as some kind of a, a relief well, I, I believe that that is, that, that used to be some kind of an old operations plan that was replaced now with the WRF. Regional Board won't even, you know, they, they consider, they, they don't consider 9P7 as like, uh, as potable water. As a matter of fact, the only time we can discharge is if it's, it goes through our microfiltration portion. So, I, you know, there could have been a time when 9P7 was used for that, for that reason, but not in the operations plan that we're aware of. And I think, I, I, I think Melissa had a good answer for the third comment. And I said, I don't even want to know if his question involved this.
Do you want me to read that part from his written public comment again? Sorry, the last question. His last question was section 3.4 states, "The updates will include actual supply and demand figures." "In fact, there is no actual supply information in the supply and demand assessment." "The anticipated total water supply values listed in the potable water shortage assessment table are not based on actual current supplies, but on customer demand numbers from 2015." "Actual current stored water supplies in the aquifer can be determined by well level readings and aquifer capacity tabulations." "It is necessary to have accurate supply information available to make good decisions about conservation measures and WRF operation." I read this directly from his written public comment.
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, so for, um, for our projected supply volumes, the reason we aren't able to provide an accurate projection of real-time supply volume from our two aquifers is because the only thing we have to go off of um, in terms of estimating the acre feet available to us is the 2000 Kennedy Jenks hydraulic model, um, which was also populated with data from the eighties and nineties at a time when our production, production rates were significantly higher. And, um, that assessment, uh, even stated in its, in and of itself that the, the model would, you know, need to be calibrated if, um, production or production volumes, you know, varied. So the, the production volumes that we're seeing in, you know, our, our current time is diminished compared to what populated that model. We do look at the model, just like we look at all, we look at, you know, well levels, um, you know, every two weeks. We, um, are constantly evaluating all of the water shortage criteria. Um, but there's no easy way to drop a line into the aquifer and, and come out with a, you know, 400 acre feet remaining. Um, those are all, that's all information that informs our projections. But we thought that the safest bet was to use actual production volumes um, from a period in time that didn't result in, um, you know, depleting aquifer levels and lagoon levels to a point that would, would be unsustainable. So that's why we, we did not use, you know, the, the Kennedy Jenks model, um, as the sole criteria for supply.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Bentonhausen. You can go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. Chairwoman Dean, I want to just come right back to that question about actual supply, which Mr. Schwartz has been very helpful in raising over the years again and again. I, I asked them, why isn't it possible to do a new version of the study done in 2000? That has, is a more appropriate model to the current, to the conditions that have developed in the past few decades. We always keep referring back to that model and then say that it can't be used now. There, therefore, we, and we judge product, actual production as the criterion for actual supply when they don't correlate. So I, I continue to have that question. I am very happy with Mr. Denso, your response to, um, General Manager Weigold's question, because I, I hope that you always, always, if you're going to err, if you're going to go in the wrong direction, you always go in the wrong direction of adding more information to that website. Um, some of us have struggled way too much over the years to get a certain information there at all. And so if you're going to, um, keep up the well levels, it will be wonderful because the, those pages, even the spaghetti one. Because for those of us who are interested in the history of water use in Cambria and more broadly than in California and beyond, those documents are essential. Um, I, I just noticed today for another reason that, that there's been a reduction in, in the posting of the budgets. Um, back only, um, we only have the past two years now of the budgets and fiscal years. That's just parenthetical, but an example of my point. And now we have to, um, do a, a very complicated search to get bud, say the fiscal year budget from 2015, 16. Um, my question was, um, going to be however, this one, and that is, when you refer to, um, the board can, um, and can put in other restrictions um, on the conservation measures. I want to know if that includes, um, surcharges, as they've been called in the past. Um, I don't, you can call them what you will, but does that include charging more money um, for water usage, um, beyond the current rates? And, um, what does the board need from, need in information in order to justify that? Do they need information other than what's on this chart? On page 27, I very much appreciate the definitions of terms used. And I think if you're going to explain this chart to us ordinaries, um, just having a nice paragraph in sort of what we used to call eighth grade English, with, without all the fancy terms that are required for bureaucratic reporting on grant. But if you could just, um, as Mr. Denso started today, working through one example of what these lines mean, it would really help people understand then. The way this is put there now, I doubt that many people in town would want to take the time necessary to make sense out of this chart, which is possible to do, but it really entails much more work than should be required for, um, what in some ways is a PR piece and we don't have a PR person for CCSD anymore. So I guess it's up to staff to write two languages all the time. What's required of you professionally and what's required of you to communicate with the public. So, uh, thank you very much. I'd appreciate especially a response on the question of whether or not there can be a surcharge or whatever one wants to call them on the rates as part of, quote, "The other restrictions." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, did you want to respond to any of that, Ray?
I think we would probably need to do some research. I'm not sure if the surcharges are linked to an emergency declaration. So beginning in stage, um, four, five and six, you're, you're actually declaring a water shortage emergency. And so I'd have to, I'd have to find out if that's what gives us the authority to impose those surcharges or if that's something we could move forward.
Thank you. See, I can't remember who raised their hand first, Michael or David?
I don't know.
It was Michael.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Well, I've got, uh, two comments and, uh, the first one, uh, both, uh, Crosby and, uh, I think Elizabeth raised already. At any time we have a conversation about water, someone always asks, or states an expectation that CCSD calculate and communicate the precise amount of water we have available. And, um, through a year on the, uh, Resources and Infrastructure Committee have come to realize that's just not practical. I have a fair bit of experience in extractive industries and I know that um, in industry, companies will spend hundreds of millions of dollars to sort out the dimensions of, of a, of a reservoir before they ever drill a well. And at that point, they still have only an order of magnitude estimate of the volumes. So, um, knowing that CCSD likely does not have at its disposal hundreds of millions of dollars to delineate the, um, the subsurface of San Simeon Creek, um, it will never be possible to, uh, to do, uh, this precise calculations. Now, every time the question is asked, Melissa, Ray, or others do their best to explain and the, uh, and the explanations are always very thorough. And, uh, just, it's occurred to me, I was thinking this morning as I was reading through the material, let's produce a white paper that explains what we know, what we can know and what we can't know, uh, and answer this question of, so hey y'all, why can't you tell me exactly how much water is down there? Fact is, it's underground and we cannot. We only have a small number of wells. We haven't delineated the interface between the, um, non-permeable, uh, reservoir rock versus the permeable, oh, aquifer that contains water. We will never know that, uh, to the extent that it would take to have an even order of magnitude estimate. So, um, really the, um, empirical data that staff has been using seems reasonable and it's about the best analogies we can do. So it's reasonable, but let's produce a white paper or something of that nature, get it on the website so we can remind folks, hey, read this because folks really are interested. They really do care. Um, and if we had, uh, if we had a short story and then the long story, because it's, uh, it could be several pages. It could be, uh, and there could be a paragraph to summarize it, but, I don't know, that's, that was my first comment. Um, and the second one is about the, the, the table on, uh, on page 27, the, uh, potable water shortage assessment table. You know, I, I had this feeling that Wayne Gretzky would be saying, all right, y'all, looks like you're going to be skating to where the puck was last month. And so, how could we get ahead of things? Because, as Ray was saying, it'll be, as Melissa was saying, it'll be fairly late into August before a stage three may be declared. And, um, then we'll have the next month's data and we don't know how far we'll be behind, be behind at that point. Um, and I really feel like we're, maybe there's no way, but we're not looking at where the puck's going to be in a month. We're looking at where it was last month and, so that's, that's my thought there.
Okay, any comments from either Melissa or Ray? Oh, okay.
I mean, I, all I can say is I'm not sure if it was already discussed, if Ray mentioned, but Megan and I are the, the two water conservation staff, um, at the district and we were both out for about three weeks total um, in July with COVID-19. So our, our ability to do any real enforcement and outreach was limited to the digital realm. Um, and it clearly wasn't as effective as it should have been or could have been. Um, so we're, we're definitely trying to make up some ground, um, this month and focusing our efforts. That'll be explained a little bit more in the forthcoming staff report, um, about the stage three. Um, we've also done a lot of research. Um, this, this is going to lead us into the conversation of the, you know, potential changes to the water shortage contingency plan. But, um, all of the evidence in the water conservation field suggests that the best way to, to realize any true, um, demand management is through enforcement. And more times than not, that comes as an allocation system with monetary penalties being enforced. So the reality is, is that pushing us into a stage four or five is probably going to be the, um, the most effective way to see that demand reduction. The, the breakdown that we're seeing so far in terms of, you know, who's using the water and who's not conserving. I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily classify it as not serving, but the, the fact of the matter is, is that our commercial sector does use more water in the dry season because our occupancy rates, um, increase during the dry season. Uh, they have more tourists staying in, in, you know, lodging. Um, we have more tourists visiting restaurants. Um, so our efforts in the stage three are almost exclusively on the commercial sector. Um, our residences are already well within, um, where they should be in terms of demand reduction. Most don't need to reduce any because they're already so efficient. So we do hope that it's not a, a chasing the puck metaphor for the next few months. Um, but I, I fully anticipate that if we start creeping towards that stage four and, um, implementing those allocations again, uh, you'll, you'll see a pretty quick, uh, change in consumption behavior across the board.
Thank you. David?
Okay. So correct me if I'm wrong here, Melissa, but, um, this new table is being driven by the state because the state drought is much more severe than our current situation right here in Cambria. Um, even though we had, you know, less rain than we should have. So we're no longer basing the stages on the rapidity of the depletion of our water supply uh, in the two aquifers, but instead basing it solely on a comparative year that we think was the right thing based upon the state saying that that's how we had to do it. Correct?
Correct, yeah. In this, in this case, that's actually, it makes sense because we're in a dry year, in a year that, you know, if, if next year we, we get an alineo, we get a ton of rain, we're flooding and we still have to plan for a dry year, it'll be a little bit harder to communicate. But yes, we are being directed by the state to plan for a shortage, whether or not you think that there is one.
Right. So it's very conceivable that we would go to a stage four based upon this new table, but still have, uh, high levels in our wells on both aquifers.
That analysis would definitely be included in whatever we deliver to the board. If we get to a point where the chart is telling us, we think we're in a stage four, but staff is recommending any changes, um, based off of, you know, observed trends in groundwater levels or whatever the, the criteria may be. Um, we would definitely explain that in the staff report itself. And the board would have the authority to either take staff recommendation or not.
Very good. That's exactly what I thought was going to happen. So I think that clarity is, is, is excellent for our understanding of what's going to happen. Thank you.
Okay, normally I only take public comment once on each item, but because this is kind of an important issue and I know that Ray and Melissa are looking for feedback on this, um, I'm going to go ahead and, let a couple of people ask a further question. Did you have your hand up, Ray?
Yeah, so, um, so the other thing too, that, uh, part of the, part of the, part of this item is to discuss plant updates to the water shortage contingency plan. Uh, you know, within, right now, we have that appendix, that attachment B, which is the, you know, that, that, that's, that's how we would amend the code that would reference the water shortage contingency plan. But we are, we do, we, we are thinking, we, we are anticipating, I should say, that, uh, that a, a full amendment to the water shortage contingency, contingency plan will be needed. Uh, at the very least, because, you know, we'll have some data from the, the N-Stream Flow Study. So I'm anticipating that early in the next year, but it, it's still a, a process. As I said, we do need to think, start thinking about- So I'm anticipating that early in the next year, but it, it's still a process. As I said, we do need to think, start thinking about it now because there's a sixty day, you know, hearing period or notification period, I'd say. But now would be the time also that we're, we're also looking for input as far as that, you know, any kind of changes to the water shortage contingency plan that, that, you know, the, the, the committee can give us.
Okay. And the changes that your proposal are what is written in red?
In the red, yes.
Twenty-six. Okay.
Those changes are going to be incorporated through just a, a really brief reference in the water shortage contingency plan that directs the reader to the code. Right now that's not there. So there's a disconnect between, you know, the procedures for the assessment being, you know, listed in our code, but then you'd have to have been attending the meetings, perhaps even be on a committee to know where to look for this document. So we'll be making that change along with some other minor corrections where language was just not consistent throughout. But I would really appreciate feedback on the shortage actions that are listed and, and whether or not the community feels that they're effective or not. You know, looking at last year in conjunction with this year, this last, you know, the last few weeks, as I said, weren't, is perhaps not the best example of the work that we can do in conservation, but if we, if we, if the community feels that we need to be kind of front loading our stages and putting things like those allocations earlier in the plan, that's the kind of feedback that we want now.
Okay. Okay. Let me, um, let me bring this Crosby and Laura back in real quick and then we'll go back to the committee and see if they have input on what you just said. Crosby or Laura, did you want to speak again?
So thank you, Vice President Dean. I wanted to clarify my comment earlier that actual stored water supplies in the aquifers can be determined by well level readings and aquifer capacity tabulations. The way this works is when you do a well level reading, you look back and you see what the previous well level reading is and how far the well water level has dropped. And then you look at how much water you've pumped. And that's the aquifer capacity. You add those all up, you have the exact usable aquifer capacity. It's very simple to do. It's not complicated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I've had some comments from members of the public on some of the water shortage recommended restrictions here. And for example, right now, comments have been made about how many days a week and how many minutes per day set per session, station, excuse me. People are allowed to water and that they think that that's quite excessive for our community. And so some of the things I think that we might be able to look at for changes in the, in the water stage use reduction recommendations would be, that would be one of them, I think. Because of, you know, you know, people need to understand, we're not telling them to go ahead and water that much. That's the maximum we, you know, want them to water, you know, but not directing them to water that much. So, you know, that particular thing I think is something we can look at is what we're allowing people for landscape irrigation. If we cut that back, people here are supposed to be trying to plant drought tolerant landscaping to avoid using as much water as possible. So that's one thing there. Does anybody else have something?
Well, how do I, where's my hand?
You're okay. I know you're trying to talk. Go ahead.
Okay.
I can hear you.
I just want to echo your comments. When I read through the whole package again today and when I get to that section, the first line of stage two where it says restricting, restricting irrigation to three days per week, I just like, this can't be. It's just a total, this, you know, totally incongruous. I can't imagine anyone would ever water three days a week in, in this town. So I would think like a stage one would say something like, you know, at the most two days per week. I don't, it's more like every, every other week is more appropriate here. So I just want to echo that. And I have, after reading through it again, I have, you know, four or five comments, but they're minor things. I think I should send those in text.
Because even minor things add up.
Well, page sixteen, eight dash seven of the water stage contingency plan, you know, the bottom of the page, stage for drought emergency. You know, I'm concerned that the restriction of no new water meter is allowed, you know, et cetera, unless water demand is offset to a net zero increase. It, I'm concerned that it can be too easy to demonstrate that other water demands will be offset such that the net will be zero. And if other demands can be offset in a lot of cases, those are conservation efforts that should happen anyway. So that concerns me.
Okay.
Page nineteen of the, the package, eight dash ten. In, in the table, the first line says require automatic shut of hoses. And we know, we know we mean automatic shut off hoses. So that's simply a typo that might make people laugh, but it may also reduce credibility. Couple other things I think are questions. Oh. Yeah. On page eight dash fourteen, you know, under financial consequences, the statement that CCSD has a steeply tiered water rate structure. To me is an exaggeration. I, as I understand it, it's a relatively small increase. I mean, it's not double or triple. It's the, the percentage increase from one water tier to the next is sufficiently minor that people of means can just blow right through there and say, who cares? So I, I would say either let's make the, the tiered rate structure steeper or let's not claim that it is steeply tiered. Because it certainly is not. I'm not organized enough to figure out Max's comments, so let's just let it flow.
You can come back and you can raise your hand again once it, once you remember after we listened to David and Brad. David?
Yes. Since irrigation has been brought up, I, I would like to bring up that there's a goodly number of people in our community that are watering their landscape pretty liberally at times with alternative water supplies, which actually I think, although I haven't investigated it, are coming from the same aquifer that CCSD water is over in San Simeon. So you know, those people that think that they're saving water by using this alternate water source need to rethink their, their water usage again.
Okay. Brad?
Yeah, I just had one comment on also on the irrigation supply as a landscape contractor. When I used to go to board meetings, people would ask, well, how long do I need to water something? Five minutes, ten minutes. The variables are drastic because it could be summer, winter slope kind of materials. So to make a blanket statement to water three times a week for how long and what are you watering? And, you know, what, what environment, what environmental impact would it have if all that stuff died because you didn't water it? So there's just a lot more, it's, I guess it's an easy way to put it on some piece of paper so people can adjust for it without thinking through the process, but it's really an arbitrary statement that means nothing in its context without, without having a context, I guess. That's just a comment. Might, might be something when you look at the ad hoc committee for conservation. That, that might play into that also.
Okay. Anybody else? Did you think of what you were trying to remember, Michael?
Well, I guess my, uh, my last comment, the table eight dash four, you know, on page twenty. And then there's one line. And so it's really a misnomer called this a table. But, you know, I've asked the question a lot of times. Okay. So if we run the WRF X number of hours, what do we expect the output to be? And so to say the range is twenty-one to two hundred fifty acre feet or something of that nature, like it's it's kind of like, it's worse than a misspelling. It's, it's saying that our, our, our range of uncertainty is, is so great. I would like to see that actually be a table where we take the, the first scenario that's described in the paragraph below, below the table that says we're going to run it so many hours a day, four days a week for so many weeks, right? Make, make four or five different scenarios and show the kind of expected outcome of those ranges. And, you know, and for any scenario, it may not be a single number. It may be a range because there's uncertainty, but you know, we, we ought to, I think, show what a like five days a week for, you know, for, run it forty hours a week, kind of scenario looks like for a month for the entire dry season. And then, and of course, you know, the comment that we could run it twenty-four, seven for the entire dry season, then what would that look like? And then we need to answer the question that the Brian disposal ad hoc is struggling with and, and Ray's struggling with. If we, you know, run it to any great extent, what on earth are we going to do with it all? And we need to have those answers, but, but at least the table could, could indicate what those outcomes could be for a few different scenarios.
I think also besides, you're looking at twenty-one to two hundred fifty acre feet per year, you know, depending on how long you run the WRF, but we all know that whatever the WRF produces, a hundred percent of it doesn't actually get to the well field. So I think that's something that needs to be taken in consideration too. Do we actually know what percentage of that water will reach the well fields? And I think a lot of it depends also on the condition of the ground near the injection site. If I remember something being said about that. So anyway, does any, do either Ray or Melissa have any comments on any of these suggestions?
I do. First, I want to say that I hear the community on the irrigation restrictions. We are definitely supportive of changing that and we are going to be reminding the board that again, they have the authority to implement more severe measures than are listed in our plan. I would also caution though that irrigation use in Cambria is abnormally low for the state of California. We are looking at like less than 10% of residential water use is used outdoors. It's more like fifty fifty in the rest of the state and in some places it's, it, that reverses and outdoor water use is the majority of residential use during the summer season. Here that is just not the case. So the irrigation measures aren't as big of a concern for me as a, you know, water conservation professional, just because I know we're not going to be able to squeeze that much out of the outdoor sector is at least as far as our residential customers are concerned. We have more information on that coming out in the staff report for the meeting on the eighteenth. Some of the tables in our water shortage contingency plan and then in the urban water management plan itself are restricted by the state. We have to follow the state's design for the table and then the inputs to the tables are also restricted. So in this case, any table that says DWR, which this one, DWR eight dash three, we, we are required to only include the inputs that you see. This table was also edited and reposted in an errata, which we have not really advertised yet. We just released it. Looks like it was on the twenty-first of July. So the state kind of came to us and told us that there were some tables in our plan that, that didn't meet their requirements. Table eight dash two, which I think we call eight dash three. Yes. So table eight dash three on page nineteen of the packet was also modified. And it's, it's a huge change. So I'll be making sure to, to, you know, call attention to that. It's the table that we've been posting in all of the board material where each action is listed out as, you know, the shortage level that it corresponds to. And then how much, you know, is that going to reduce the shortage gap? That, that has been expanded on greatly compared to what you see in the original water shortage contingency plan. And I think, I think that about covers it. We, we are limited in, in certain ways that, you know, the public might not be able to see, but, but staff is aware of. And any, any ways that we can improve clarity on things like these, these standardized tables, I will certainly take those recommendations. I'll add what I can in terms of the potable water shortage assessment table. And I do think it would make sense in the, the discussion on the operational changes for the WRF to direct people to the website. Fortunately, the WRF is, you know, a work in progress and the information about how we would operate it, when we should operate it, triggers to operate it, those are all still being fleshed out and we'll have a lot more information to incorporate into this document. And I think that's part of the reason why Ray is aiming for a early twenty twenty-three amendment period. So that we have more information to, to point to. I do realize that it's a little bit vague, but the twenty-one to two hundred and fifty is about the minimum and maximum that you would consider, you know, producing from this facility if it were being operated.
Okay. Anybody else have questions or comments? No? Okay. If you have any more suggestions for Ray or Melissa on, on these different stages and what we can do to, to make them more effective as far as what the reduction requirements are, please go ahead and email them to Ray or Melissa, but I'd appreciate if you copied me as well. So I know that maybe you want to think about this a little bit more. So, but I think Ray and Melissa are trying to get this together within a certain period of time, but I do like, I do like this new chart that you've come up with. I think it's a lot easier to understand. I think once you present it at the board to the, to the public, because I know you only have eight, eight members of the public attending right now and one's my husband, so he hears about it anyway. And two of them are board members. So, you know, more of the public needs to, to hear about this and I think you've done a good explanation. I like the definition of the terms that you've put in there with it. And I agree with Dr. Bentonhausen that maybe when you explain this, kind of do a little bit more. You know, I forget what grade she said. Explanation of it, less technical terms, maybe. So everyone can understand it. As far as including both tables, I think the general manager thought that was a good idea. I guess we can see how that works out. Because you're still going to have the things on there like the gradient and all of that. So anyway. So are we done with this part then? No one else has any questions? Okay. Moving on to agenda item 3D. Forming an RNI ad hoc committee to define the needs and parameters for climate change, climate crisis policy policy for CCSD board consideration. I attached the needs assessment from the policy committee to this agenda packet. Don't both you and Ray disappear, Melissa, because we may need you in a minute. Okay. So I attached that to it also. I did let the rest of the committee members know that they could hear the full, full board discussion on this and all of the comments that members of the public made as well on the July 14th CCSD board meeting Zoom at one hour and 58 minutes into the Zoom recording. And I don't know how many of you had a chance to watch that. And also I will provide with the ad hoc to the ad hoc committee when it's formed a copy of Moro Bay's climate action plan. So you can look and see what they've included in there. I guess that you can call it a policy for consideration. Now, Michael has expressed an interest in being part of this ad hoc committee. Does anyone else like to participate in this ad hoc committee? And this is to define the needs and the parameters for a policy, not to actually write the policy itself. The board would like us to get the parameters of a policy. And you can bring it, the ad hoc committee can bring this back to RNAI to talk about, and then we'll forward it to the board. So anybody else like to join Michael on this ad hoc committee? Everybody speak at once. Okay. Michael, I'll work on it with you, but I'm going to be gone next month, so we may have a little delay in that. Ray had some thoughts. This is part of the reason that this was brought forward to RNAI to work on is Ray was mentioning something about us needing a climate action plan as well. Do you want to talk about that a minute, Ray?
Yeah, so the 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 example that I that I shared relating to the moral base climate action plan was really what what I was referring to about this because like a plan specifically with, you know, relating to climate change, climate change issues is definitely something. It would be a good idea to formalize that for, you know, to base policy on. It could be argued that a plan needs to come before the policy, but but it could be argued the other way too. But but in light of this, it's like I I believe a plan would be would be beneficial because it will meet the needs in a lot of ways. Like if it, if there were, for example, grants that were related to climate change, which a lot of grants can be tied to climate change now because there's water, water and energy are tied together with in a lot of the in a lot of outlook on things. And and the data bears that out. So so as far as like the direction in which the district would want to go, it definitely would make sense to to formalize a climate policy based on on a formalized climate change action. And then I pointed to the you know, the mora bay plan is is a good example that the that the state pointed me to when I when I was discussing this two and a half years ago when I first started working here. So so yeah, that's 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 basically by my my outlook on it. I definitely think that it's it's a good direction for the district to go. But but I think it does need to be formalized in an actual plan.
Okay. Hearing that, do I have any more volunteers?
My goodness, Ray, you're not really expecting us to produce a 200-page document.
No, it's
No.
No. And I hope you're not expecting me to do do it either, so.
Well, there's a lot of things I think in Moro Bay's plan that don't necessarily apply to us or, you know, because they're a city. And we don't have, for example, I saw something in there about off-road vehicles and things like that. So I mean, there there is some a lot more in there than we would need to have in ours. Mr. Weiple?
I was going to say, if we have a roadmap that determines we're going to do a climate change policy, we'll probably put a bid out to hire somebody that knows a little bit more about that than we do.
Yeah, that would take some load off of Ray. Okay, I have one written comment that I'll go ahead and read, and then I'll take Dr. Bentonhausen's comment. I think you all received a copy of Tina Dickinson's written public comment, but I'll go ahead and and read it. So it's available in the recording. Good morning, Chair Dean and RNAI committee members. And she did not send this to Stephen because she did not have his email address, although I did forward it, I think, to Stephen. Since I'm unable to attend today's meeting, I'm submitting the questions below in writing ahead of today's meeting. Can you please explain why today's agenda item 4D is on an RNAI agenda rather than a policy committee agenda? And she's referring to agenda item 4D, forming an ad hoc committee to define the needs and parameters for climate change climate crisis policy for CCSD board consideration. Secondly, why has there been no mention of a sewer hookup for Dow? As appears to be the case from construction in that area at the north end of Lefingwell and across Highway one at the Dow property. Respectfully, Tina Dickinson and Ross Gray about that last part after we take the rest of public comment. So Dr. Bentonhausen, you wanted to speak. Let me see if I can unmute you. Okay.
Thank you very much. I simply want to double check something. I'm grateful to you, Vice President Dean, for asking the clarification from from you, Mr. Denzel. It could be that I badly remembered the last board meeting. Mr. Denzel, was I, is my memory wrong in recalling that you said that a climate action plan was already integral and required in a totally different project that CCSD is working on? I don't know whether it was a report to the state that where where one would be needed. So that's why it would be good to have one. If you could repeat for my slow brain these days, what the situation, do we already have a need for a climate action plan that's not a part of this policy question? Thank you.
Ray?
Yeah, I can answer that. So what I specifically example I referred to at board meeting was I was referring to a discussion I had two and a half years ago when I first started working here about our our state revolving fund application, our grant application. And in order for us to get more points, this is just an example to 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 get better standing on our grant application, a climate change action plan needed to be adopted by the board. And in which case we didn't have one. And, you know, they, you know, they, I tried different ways to to get the board to, you know, to do to get Cambria to may, you know, possibly fulfill that requirement. But but no, it had to be an official plan. And that's when they referred me to the Moro Bay's climate change action plan because it is a robust plan that that addresses all the needs that Moro Bay had. And obviously, like, like Director Dean said, it would definitely, it would be different from us. And I'm hoping that, you know, it's it's going to be smaller in scope. But it's still, it still does need to be formalized. But yes, it was. It's 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 not just for the state revolving fund. It's it's for other grant opportunities where we want to 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 move forward with a lot of, you know, the climate change issues that that the community is concerned about here. So, yes.
Okay, does that answer your question, Dr. Bentonhausen? You can unmute if you want. I have you still permitted to talk.
Oh, there, down in the other corner. Yes, thank you very much. That does let me think that perhaps my memory wasn't as bad as I thought as I thought it might be. Thank you very much, Mr. Denzel. And that's all a whole nother reason why this ad hoc committee has some really, really helpful work to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me a minute. Not quite as efficient as Leah in dealing with the how to let people in and out. Okay, so to to answer part of Ms. Dickinson's question. The, this was not referred back to the policy committee to do the needs assessment because we were following the bylaws of the standing committee. And the policy committee bylaws, section 1.7.3. The policy committee is supposed to A, review existing operational governance policies that the board has identified as requiring assessment update or organization for consistency with other existing policies. And B, identify potential areas of policy needs not currently addressed in the CCSD policy handbook. Develop needs assessment regard, require, excuse me, regarding impact due to the lack of policy and immediacy of needs. The committee chair shall provide the needs assessment to the board members for the consideration. If determined that a policy is required, the board will assign a board at member ad hoc committee to define the policy needs and parameters. The result in the policy parameters will be brought to the board members for consideration and as needed, directed to the appropriate resources for policy development. The policy committee came forward to the board with a needs assessment for climate change, climate crisis policy. And it was discussed, I think, the whole discussion, the whole agenda item took about 45 minutes, which you'll see if you watched the recording. And members of the board recommend since this, you know, dealt with a few things that were on RNAI's scope of responsibility that it be referred to RNAI. And we had concurrence from Mr. Diento because he did feel we needed a climate action plan. So this came to us for this effort, and we are supposed to determine parameters for a policy and then bring it back to the board. So we were doing what the bylaws stated we need to do. So anyway, that's to answer that part of the question. And then, Mr. Denzel, you want to answer her last question about there was no mention of a sewer hookup for Dow, as appears to be the case from construction in that area at the north end of Lefingwell and across Highway one at the Dow property. And I know you did email her the answer to that, but you might want to go ahead and respond to that on the recording as well.
Yes, I'll answer it publicly. So the right now, the sewer hookup for Dow is the application has not been formally submitted to the district yet. Now, we have talked about them connecting to to our sewer, but the application has not been submitted to to the district. Because in which case, you know, we would review it and and it would still need board approval in order to to get them hooked up to our sewer. My guess right now, it's so it's currently, so it's currently not the district's project, and it's not my project at the moment. What I'm guessing happened is that they they needed a a permit from Caltrans to cross under Highway one. And they probably had some time constraint to to get that done. So again, this is a guess based on what what I know about these projects in the past is that they they wanted to to get that. Because, you know, we've already determined that, you know, they have capacity for us. So but but again, we we still need to we still need to get the the actual application assembled to us. So but at the moment, it's not, I didn't report on it because it's 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 not the district's project yet.
Thank you. David?
Just a point of clarity. They already have a water meter, correct, Mr. Denzel?
Yes.
So what was the, what was that facility using for wastewater before? Did they have a septic system or or what?
It was a septic system and the septic system had failed. So they they needed to connect the sewer if they wanted to do any more improvements.
Okay. Okay, is there any more discussion about this ad hoc committee issue? David, did you have something else? Your hand still up? Okay. You all know that I'm going to be out of town next month, and I just wanted to to mention that one of the things that I'm going to be doing is attending the Floriade in Amsterdam, which is a once every 10 years botanical world's fair. But the the theme for this year is climate. And just finding new sustainable environmentally friendly sources of energy. How to create a greener, more more environmentally friendly community, a few things like that. And so I'm hoping to bring back some good information that might help with this ad hoc committee for parameters. So I just wanted to to bring that up. I'm hoping to learn a lot. We're going an extra day ahead of time, so we have extra time to spend exploring all of these things. So I will bring back as much information as I can from this. Okay, future agenda items. Does anybody have any future agenda items? David?
Yeah, not not an agenda item necessarily, but I would like to see on future agendas all of the current ad hocks listed underneath ad hoc reports so that we can kind of keep track of which ones are current and 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 what progress is being made on those.
Okay, yeah, because I've been, yeah, I need to look that up too, because I'm I may be a little off on who's on what committee, so.
Right. Yeah, that would be that would be a good addition to it. The 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 ad hoc, what its purpose is, and then who's on that ad hoc committee.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Ray, I think you had something that you wanted to bring forward to RNAI, but that you weren't going to be ready for until later in September. So do we, do we still need a September, the meeting in September, the second week of September? Or did you want to move our meeting to later in the month to bring the item that you wanted to talk about to us? Because I know you're going to be gone in October, so you're not going to be bringing things to us in October. So do you have things for the second week of September or just for the last part of September? Do we need to to schedule a special meeting? You're muted.
I wanted to bring before the the committee the the county's D cell plan. And and how Cambria could or would play a part. So.
Okay, and that's what you wanted to bring to us?
I wanted to bring that hopefully in September if we could.
Okay. And when we discussed it, we were talking about September 26th, unless you don't need me there for part of the discussion because I'm not going to be here for the first, the originally scheduled meeting. Okay, well, we'll figure it out.
Yeah. Of course, it would be nice if you were there, but you know, if it's not on.
Okay, we'll see. I have to work out with the schedule with our committee members. Michael, did you have your hand up?
So just curious, so are you still planning the September 12th?
Unless Ray doesn't have anything for us to work on. Okay, I'm not going to change the meetings yet. We'll we'll all figure it out.
We'll see.
It's not on, it's not on the agenda to change the meeting. I was just asking, Ray, for future agenda items. Is that, do you have anything else you feel you're going to be bringing forward to us that we would be ready to discuss? What is that date, September 12th?
Yes.
Ray muted, so I guess not.
Oh, no, no, I, nothing comes to mind for me.
Okay. I'll reach out to you a little bit later, but right now we're going to work on the current ad hoc. Updating what current ad hoc committees we have, who's on the committees. Hopefully, maybe we'll have some more ad hoc committee reports. And And uh, David and I usually work on the agenda, so we'll um work on what other things we'll be ready for. So if nobody else has anything. No? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make that motion. Then we adjourn the meeting.
Okay, anybody want to second it?
I will second the motion.
Does anybody object to adjourning the meeting? No, okay, it is three fifty-three, the meeting is adjourned, thank you. Press stop recording.